Is that each year, school committees consider whether their district should be in a school choice program during the upcoming school year. If they choose not to accept school choice pupils from other districts, they must take a vote prior to June 1st, and this will be our last meeting prior to our next June meeting, and report the results to the Department of Education, which is typically done through the Office of the Superintendent. If we do not vote by June 1st, we automatically become a school choice district. This vote is recorded and forwarded to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Historically, Northborough Public Schools has not been a participant in school choice, and it is again my recommendation this evening to the Northborough School Committee that we do not choose to participate in the FY 2018 school year. Students who are enrolled under school choice program are entitled to remain in the district through grade eight. My recommendation is based on the following: the current fluctuation of class enrollments during a given school year, and as we know, we spent considerable time implementing a new class size policy redistricting option this past year. Next year will be our second year, and in part, it was because of those unanticipated fluctuations that occur throughout the year, particularly at the beginning of every school year. The impact on enrollments in successive years, it's hard to predict what enrollments would be like three years down the road, but in fact, if a student is welcomed into our district under the school choice option, they do then have the option to remain right through eighth grade. The reimbursement per child is only one-third the cost of the actual per pupil expenditure here in the Northborough Public Schools, and many of our neighboring districts are not identified as school choice districts. So for these reasons, I would recommend that the school committee, again this evening, vote not to participate in the school choice program when it comes up in the agenda.
Thank you. Seeing as this is a public hearing, I'd like to open it up to the public for any public comments regarding school choice. Hearing and seeing none, I will then close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone. And we'll move on to the first item on our agenda, which is the action of the open meeting minutes of April 5th, 2017.
Can I ensure person? I move that we accept the open meeting minutes of April 5th, 2017.
Second. Any comments or discussions on that? All in favor? Yes, thank you. Next item is the action on the executive session minutes of April 5th, 2017. We are going, we are requesting a vote to approve and release.
Retain.
Oh, really?
That was a correction that I'd like to make based on recent correspondence I received. So I'd like a vote to accept and retain both April 5th and March 1st.
And we can combine those two?
Can I make a motion to approve and retain both executive session minutes of April 5th, 2017, and March 1st, 2017?
Great. Motion by Susan, seconded by Keith, all in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Under, first item under new business is Northborough Town Meeting Review. You can start.
Oh, I'd like to thank the community of Northborough for once again supporting our FY 2018 budget so overwhelmingly, and it was such a positive perception. And again, an honor to present before the town and highlight so many of the wonderful things that take place each and every day in our schools, but also to foreshadow good things to come through the budget that we had proposed. I'd also like to thank everyone here at Central Office, but certainly everyone out there at our buildings, the administration, our teachers, and share with them my recognition that for the good work that you do, people feel so positive about our schools and so confident in supporting our budget. So thank you, and thank the school committee for what was a very collaborative process together and also with the town. It was another great year working with some difficult issues with the town, and it's nice to know that we have such a positive working relationship when things get difficult and when things some days easier.
I'd like to thank you, Superintendent Johnson, for your fantastic presentation on the budget and the follow-up of the present, not much of a presentation, but the information that you provided after the motion for the new roof for Proctor School. I just feel like it's just, it's so, it's nice to be prepared when you go to town meeting. And we had great, it was great, I thought it was, I think everything went great, thank you to my fellow committee members attending. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to share about town meeting?
I'd just like to thank the principals for all their hard work and working back when you just, seems like you get back to school and you have to work on the next year's budget and have the foresight to see what you're going to need. So, but thank you very much for taking care of the needs of the students and the faculty and the supportive staff that are in your buildings. And again, to the administration for a wonderful job in collaboration with the town officials and doing it with the hard work and the good rapport you have with John Cudair, and the extra Saturday of going and presenting to appropriations was wonderful. And to the board members for their good questions and questions and answers they have to the public when they ask it, and also to the voters for approving the budget. And it should be a casebook on how to get a budget passed in hard times. So thank you very much. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. Any other discussion on it? Great. All right, well then we will move on to what was already aforementioned on the school choice vote. So I'll ask that we start with a motion.
I motion that we do not participate in the school choice for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Keith. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
I'm sending that off to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Next item on our agenda is approval of a $600 donation from John and Eileen Dawson to the Proctor School reading program.
There is a letter in the packet I don't want. Alana, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. So the Dawson family has their last child who's in fifth grade that'll be moving on to Melican next year, and the families had several children go through Proctor, and they're very grateful for the services provided by the teachers, and most especially Mrs. Pabresa, the reading support that the children have received. And they wanted to make a donation for our reading program, and we are very delighted and grateful for this donation.
I, I'm sorry, so Joan first.
I just had a question.
Sure.
Do you have any idea what this money will be earmarked for?
We've talked about using it to purchase nonfiction literature, in particular to support the new science units that we started this year, so we'd like to build up those areas.
Oh, that's great. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I move that we approve this $600 donation from John and Eileen Dawson to the Proctor School reading program.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you to the Dawson family.
Thank you. If we can, you could send the thanks of the Northborough School Committee along somehow as a thank you to them.
Absolutely.
We would appreciate that.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
We also send, whenever we have a donation, a thank you on your behalf through the Superintendent's office. They'll be double thanked, which is never enough.
Twice? Yes, exactly. Rather be twice than not at all. Great. So next item on our agenda, well, there's no old business, but there's no old business at this time, so we'll move to Superintendent's report to the committee.
You do have in your package the expenditure report as of April 30th. I did make a notation, while there are no significant variables to report this month, we again are watching and keeping a watchful eye over our special ed costs. At this time, you'll note that our budget balance is approximately the same as it was last month, but what we did elect to do at this time in the year is to access some of our circuit breaker revolving funds. It is there for use in the current year and in subsequent years. I would also like to add that there are very few districts who are planful to the point where circuit breaker funding that is captured in one year is holistically expended in the next. So I do want to say that we're still very much in the positive in our circuit breaker funding expenditures projected for next month, and the fact that we are a district that continually carries over the full circuit breaker reimbursement each year is a feat. And so at this point, what we've chosen to do to just make this budget, you know, a little bit more workable as we move towards closing it out as of June 30th, was to access some of those funds. I will also note that even though it's April 30th, in a budget cycle, a few more months of expenditures can certainly bring about a very different picture. So looking forward to working through this. Weather's on our side. I think the snow is over. The sun has come out, so the need to have heating costs escalate from month to month is diminished, and that, as you'll notice, will potentially impact the bottom line as we move forward to close out this year. So I just wanted to make that notation.
Thank you.
Okay, and so what we need tonight is always a vote to approve until audited.
All motion that we approved the FY 17 monthly general fund expenditure report as of April 30th, approved until audited.
Thank you. And second? Any further discussion? All in favor? unanimous. Thank you.
And we have updates on enrollments. These were, of course, dated April 15th, so it changes not significantly, but sometimes from week to week. These were numbers captured prior to the occasion. I will say that we had, the administrative team and myself had an exciting conversation about enrollments in kindergarten just yesterday, and it's a little early to predict final class sizes, but we have a watchful eye over some classes that are capped at this point. As you know, we each month distribute a sort of a new capped projection based on our recommended class size policies, and I've been saving them since January, and I can say there's definitely been some shifts since we've started watching this, these numbers. And again, just as I mentioned, the budget changes certainly in two months, so does our enrollment projection. I will say that I do have some dates to share. Folks have been asking about kindergarten registrations and also when we're going to be registering folks at Central Office this summer. So I do just want to share them, and we're going to put them out on our website as well. This will be the second year that we're enrolling new students in our schools at Central Office. It worked out very well last year, thanks to the good work of the administrative team and also the work at Central Office, particularly Nancy Bisset. So as of June 19th, there will be no enrollment of students moving into the district at the buildings. That's so we can capture all the data and do the work that we need to do moving people around on the waitlist throughout the summer. And that period will end September 8th. So we also recognize that sometimes there's significant changes the first couple of days of school. People may not have had a chance to enroll students over the summer, or they may have forgotten to unenroll a student, and so we do see some shifting going on. So to activate or to close our waitlist too prematurely would not necessarily allow students to be in certain schools. We watch the enrollments, and as enrollments dip below our recommended class sizes, why then we activate and go to the waitlist and move those next students up? So we're also anticipating, because it happens every summer, that some students may move out of district. You know, what was really interesting last year that was quite a surprise, while we had 58 students enroll in our K-5 schools over the summer, the number of students that were actually captured on our waitlist was only 15, and really 15 students were moved out of their neighborhood schools. So really what that demonstrates is a lot of that shifting, and Melican reported that there were 62 students. So even though our numbers pretty much stayed flat, it showed the shift of folks coming in and out over the summer months. So the numbers stayed flat, the people in the chairs were still there, but they were different faces. So the summer is an interesting time, and it will be also interesting to see what the second year of this process looks like throughout the summer. So we're all on board, and for those people who are wondering when the placement letters will be mailed, that will be August 21st by all the principals on the same day. So we're in good shape. We've had a lot of conversations, and again, kudos to the whole team for making this work and making it work really for parents and students.
Well, what's that date again?
August 21st.
That's a big day. I'm saying that's going to announce this far in advance.
Yes, yeah.
That's wonderful.
I appreciate that. That's a lot earlier than last year as well, so it's usually one of the first questions that comes up, that, when is the school calendar approved, and when do we get our placement letters?
When is the last day of school?
June 22nd.
June 22nd?
Thursday.
Did you have a question?
I do. Do any of these fluctuations have any bearing on projected staffing that we built into the budget recently?
No, but one of the things that we are being very watchful over is some places where we're just potentially over cap that could dip below cap, and a few areas we're watching that might be over cap. So we have the opportunity not to reduce staff, but maybe to move staff, and that will really depend on that comings and goings within the district. So we had a very lengthy conversation and a very engaging conversation about what that might look like, and so we've got those points where we're being very watchful, and if that changes and certain things fall below cap because of students moving outside of a neighborhood school, we have the opportunity to shift if we're seeing significant increases someplace with no impact on additional staffing or reducing staffing as proposed. So thank you for asking that, because we did have quite a long conversation about that.
We being, you mean with the principals?
Yes, administrative team. Everyone on this side and that side, we meet together quite frequently.
But we were all together.
All together. Yes, all together.
It's not two different sides.
That's right. Only tonight, it's two different sides.
Any further discussion regarding enrollments? I have one quick question in regards to the pre-K enrollment. The numbers reflected on tonight's handouts or what was in the packet, are those all of Northborough's pre-K enrollments, or only Northborough students, pre-K students who are enrolled at Z?
So you asked an excellent, for an excellent breakdown going forward, and we've started that. I met with special ed, and they provided me with some numbers that I didn't feel were concrete enough to share tonight, but the numbers that you see here are just the numbers in Northborough. It does not represent the 15 or 16 students that are already in Southborough.
So it might make more sense to start reflecting that in the next school year enrollment sheet since there will only be Northborough students.
Right. And also, there are other programs that we're going to break out as well, so that it'll be so noted on the sheet.
We'll look forward to that in, starting in September.
Right.
All right, great, thank you. And are we, any further discussion on enrollments? So we'll move on. There is, next item on the agenda is educational policy. There, however, there is none at this time, so we will move to policy development and/or distribution. We have a second read for two policies. Open it up to any discussion from committee members? If I may, I might, I very much like the changes that have been implemented on J-140, and my suggestion would be that we move, if there was a motion made, we move to adopt this policy with the changes as reflected in the second read.
This was the one that was reviewed. This was done by legal, right?
Both were reviewed by council.
Okay. And Joan?
I move that we accept the revised policy J-140 on student behavior.
Seconded by Joan, seconded by Keith. Any further discussion on policy J-140? All in favor? On policy I-110, this is clearly a personal hangup of mine, that when we say year, I think January to December. So my recommendation on this policy is, I guess it would be the second big paragraph on the bottom of page one, where it says principals will take steps to ensure that parents are apprised of the possibility of retention early in the year. It would be my suggestion that it say early in the school year?
Easy correction.
Am I correct in assuming that that is what you mean? You mean school year? Or do you actually mean calendar year?
Correct.
Okay. I would prefer that clarification being made. I don't think it needs to go back to policy for that. I think if we, it can be changed. The other small, small changes would be at the top where it goes, we can see the change was made, that it seems too much of a run-on, where it says, "A small number of students, however, may benefit from staying another year in the same grade." I think that's meant to be a stop there, and then a capital P, "Parents may initiate a request for retention and/or," and I think it would be like an and slash or, "The principal of the school attended by such child shall determine whether referrals shall be made under chapter 71B." And it continues on. Was there, should there be a stop there or no?
It can be.
Well, it is a giant sentence.
Yeah, I don't think it changes the meaning of the one or two sentences, in which case there should be probably a slash between and and or also in the same.
Yeah. That was another suggestion, and the numbers need to be adjusted chronologically. It's up to committee members whether they'd like the changes just to be made and approved tonight with the changes that we're discussing tonight, or if you want to send it back to policy. I'm open to motions on either.
I have a question. I'm still looking at that run-on sentence up in the first paragraph. If you look after chapter 71B, because there's two ands, I didn't know who it was referring to, "Who shall promptly and in writing notify the parents if a referral is made." And if it's going back to the principal, that's really going to the subject far behind. So my recommendation might be to put another period in the sentence, it's 71B.
Period.
Take away the and and say, "The principal shall promptly and in writing," and just refer to the principal. Is that who it is?
Mm-hmm, yes. Right in time for MCAS, the LA.
And so on the numbered points, it would be one, we've only got four total, right?
Only, well, we actually, yes.
Five.
One, two, three, we have five. Two is three, three is four, four is five, and six is five. So it's one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, I didn't see the sixth term.
So if we're going to vote this, I'd like to just read it back. If we're just going to edit it tonight and then vote it approved? Can we review that first paragraph so I make the corrections?
Sure. I think we can be efficient in that respect.
So I see the reading of this as follows: "In general, students shall be placed at the grade level to which they are best adjusted academically, socially, and emotionally; the educational period. The educational program shall provide for the continuous progress from grade to grade with students spending one year in each grade. A small number of students, however, may benefit from staying another school year in the same grade, period. Parents may initiate a request for retention and/or the principal of the school attended by such, by such child shall determine whether a referral should be made under chapter 71B, period. The principal shall promptly and in writing notify the parents if a referral is being made and of their right to such referral. Such retention may be considered when?" One is one, there is, the two is crossed out as is printed, and then we just enumerate as two, three, four, five.
And then the next paragraph, it needs, that first sentence needs a school instead of year.
Okay. You're really in the school year?
Yeah. Are there any further questions or discussion on policy I-110?
Just the last sentence prior to the end of the school year, comma, another meeting will be held.
Accept what changes? Was there a motion?
I move to accept the policy I-110, promotion of retention of students as revised at the meeting today.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
That's exciting, to approve policies.
Very nice.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
More coming behind it, right?
Thank you. So we'll move on. Audience sharing. And we'll start with our audience. Does anyone have, anyone in the audience have anything to share? No? Okay. Okay, great, yeah. Sharing, thank you. Principals. Would you rather we start at the other end of the page?
No, I wouldn't do that to Mrs. Callahan.
You're so kind.
So in respect for Educator Appreciation Week, I would like to, number one, say thank you to all of the staff, most specifically the Lincoln Street School staff, since that's where I work every day, and also a thank you to the Lincoln Street PTO for the goodies and treats they've put out for us this week and their appreciation for all of the work that the staff at Lincoln Street does for their children every day. Also, we have an upcoming event at Lincoln Street, a brand-new event, a multicultural awareness week, and that will be taking place the week of May 22nd. And each day, we'll have different activities for the students, celebrating the diversity and the different cultures that are reflected by our students and families. The highlight of the week will be a multicultural evening, where we will have booths representing countries, we will have international cuisine, the world's largest coot game with culturally relevant questions, and artwork that students have put together in celebration of the cultures at Lincoln Street. So we're looking forward to that coming up towards the end of the month.
Sorry, is that open to other, to other students in the district, the evening event?
If they would like to come and visit and join us, they're absolutely welcome to. Sure.
So I'm going to echo what Jen said, I just want to thank the Proctor teachers and all the staff members for everything that they do every day, going above and beyond. And thank you to our PTO this week, they have certainly spoiled us each and every day. We've had breakfast and lunch and treats, and every morning you can hear the teachers oohing and aahing, so it's been a lovely week, so I just want to say thank you to them. And we had a multicultural event at Proctor. Last Friday, we had a multicultural fair, which was a culmination of artwork and singing and dancing in a reader's theater with an African folk And at the end of the month, we are having a Memorial Day celebration, and we're inviting our local servicemen and women to join us, veterans as our honored guests. We have the Asabet Valley Technical High School ROTC's coming to do a color guard for us, student speakers, singing. So we're very honored that we can invite our local servicemen and women to join us. So you're welcome to attend as well.
So I have a bunch of thanks for the Z-School. We seem to be very busy this month. Last week, we had a full week of environmental awareness that our third, fourth, and fifth grade Environmental Club put together. And our culminating activity is actually this coming Friday. Sam Jaffe is bringing the Caterpillar Lab to the Z-School on Friday. So each of our grade levels will have an opportunity to learn about the importance of caterpillars in our community, especially those that are in danger. So we have that coming as our culminating activity. We do have our second coffee house, so there's been a lot of excitement at school with students coming in early, staying in at recess, staying after school to practice and rehearse with Mr. Phelps, our music teacher. That is at six-thirty on Friday night. I understand the weather is not supposed to be that nice out, so if you're looking for something to do, please come over and see some of the best entertainers that you could ever possibly want to see. I think Mr. LaBelle has some personal investment in that, if I remember correctly. Next week, we are welcoming our incoming kindergarten students for two storytimes, one on the tenth at eight forty-five and one on the eleventh at one forty-five, just as a way to get them into the building and meet our staff, get comfortable with our building and learn a little bit more about us. We have our Kids Fest on Saturday, the thirteenth, from eleven o'clock till three, so we hope that you'll come by for that and fund our PTO. On that same note, I do want to reiterate my colleagues' statements about working with wonderful people every day. We've had a lovely week at the Z-School for Teacher Appreciation Week and cannot speak more highly about the Z-School staff and what they bring into the building with them every day. It's a pleasure to work with them. Last but not least, we must be on a theme, is our World Day for Culture, which will be on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of May. This year, we've had events the last few years, but this year, we are asking parents to come in and share pieces of their culture with us. We have a group of students from Algonquin who are ELL students who are going to come and share favorite folk tales with our students from their country of origin. And then we will be ending the day with an afternoon of festivities with dance from a couple of different programs that our students participate in. So feel free to join us and share with us what you would like to share.
I will echo my colleagues and also recognize the teachers and staff at Peaslee School for their hard work and their commitment to the children of the community. And a huge thank you to our PTO, who has been equally as kind and generous at Peaslee as the others have been at their schools. Lots of goodies. It's a wonder that teachers don't all just roll out after this meeting, because we are treated so well. I also wanted to mention that I would like to congratulate my colleagues who put together the International Night. I don't know if Christine's going to mention that, but we had a very nice turnout and the families really appreciated it, and the children are still talking about what a good time they had at Algonquin, when all three of the communities came together for International Night. We also had some fun today with bugs. We had a presentation about bugs, the highlight being the spitting cockroaches. So hopefully, none were left behind. But the children really enjoyed that and were quite intrigued. The other one that was so exciting was the yellow moose. Personally, they would not be my favorite. On Friday, our fifth graders are doing a presentation. They have made sound suits, which are vests that they made out of paper with all kinds of trappings and decorations on them. And they are in recognition of the artwork of Nick Cave, who does huge installations and does sound suits that make noise. So the kids are going to present those and do a performance for us on Friday, so you're welcome to join us. Let's see, what else? We have a few other things to talk about. This week, we began kindergarten screening for our incoming kindergarteners. Next week, the week that fifth grade has been waiting for is our trip to nature's classroom for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Very much looking forward to that. Again, thank you for your support of that program. And then we all have students who will be participating in a program called Kids on the Block the week of Friday. And then on the seventeenth, will be the All-Town Band Performance. So we're all looking forward to that, too. That brings students from all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, to perform together. Pretty exciting stuff going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. My colleagues have welcomed me to the stage tonight, so I appreciate that. Thank you for letting me go last. That's exactly where I wanted to be. So sports are in full vigor here at Melikan. We have ninety-seven kids on the track team. We have a baseball and softball team, and we're moving and shaking, and that is going very well. The kids are finding some success out there on the fields. Last Friday, we had the annual Greek festival with the seventh graders. The hallways were filled with cheers and chants and Greek food, and the kids really had a wonderful time. I was going to mention the same thing about the All-Town Band. I think that's a big part of the fifth graders' transition to Melikan, that they get an opportunity to come and perform here next Wednesday, the seventeenth, Wednesday night. We have our seventh graders going to the MFA next week, the eighth, ninth, and the eleventh, which is nice timing to get a group out of the building when we still have students in the building taking MCAS. So with everything going on, we still have the opportunity to have outside learning opportunities for the students. We also have coming up, we have on the thirty-first, we're going to have our second annual Coffee House that is run by Mrs. Getchel, and the kids have an opportunity to sing a song of choice in groups or alone. We had a full crowd last year, so hopefully, we have students of all grades participating again in that, in that this year. And lastly, we do have the second annual Lisa Kaplan 5K. That is on May twentieth, Saturday morning. It's a ten o'clock start. There's a nine-thirty fun run for kids, and this registration is open from seven-thirty to nine in the morning. And all the proceeds are going to go to the Fifteen Forty Connection, which helps with cancer research. It's a local nonprofit over in Westboro. So again, it's alive and well here at Melikan. Everyone's busy, and we're trying to get to the end of the year with good spirits and energy.
Thank you. Thank you. Committee members, any of you that need to share?
I have an announcement for the NSPAC.
Sure.
Okay. Do you have it?
Is this the, is it Go the Distance?
Yes.
You take it, take it away.
So the NSPAC is having its seventh annual Go the Distance Awards Night, which will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-third, from six to eight p.m. at Algonquin in the cafeteria. And all are welcome to come and congratulate their sixty recipients this year. Do you have anything to add?
I do. I'll wait until my turn.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm also, I'm awesome.
I just wanted to add that I did go to the International Night. After receiving such beautiful invitations, I felt like I needed to go. It was a wonderful night, and thank you to members who attended, or people who attended. It was a nice, it was a nice event. It was great that they put that on, and it's another means of our, our community showing inclusion and celebrating our diversity.
So I think I'm the recap for the evening. Because as this, all this was shared, I was checking things off, but I might be able to add a few comments here or there. So it's definitely the merry month of May, but it's also a month to remember, and whether that's celebrating those who have served through Memorial Day exercises, or remembering that those who make a difference most are found closest to our heart, and that is our students in the classrooms and at our school. So we thank all of our teachers for the good work that they do with our students each and every day. Across this district, they are who really help make us one community of learners. With respect to Go the Distance, I think there's another wonderful opportunity to show our appreciation for individuals who work with those students who might need a little bit more extra support in any given day. And this is always a wonderful evening, well-attended, lots of children around, enjoying being out with parents and their teachers that they may have nominated, actually. It's a great, it's a great event, and it is sponsored by the Northborough-Southborough Parent Advisory Council. With respect to Friday night, what a night. I think it's going to be a new tradition in our district. There were over four hundred people on a Friday night with tables and tables full of food, representing their own cultural practices and celebrations. And I want to give a shout-out to Rhoda Webb for spearheading this initiative. She works tirelessly on behalf of the English-language learning students in the district and all of those teachers who were present that night, who are also supporting our ELL program across the district. It was such a great night. And just a small anecdote, which ended up, ended up on a very positive note. It was about eight, maybe quarter of eight, and I had a call from Rhoda. A little youngster pulled the fire alarm, and she said there was no stopping the conversations. It was a beautiful night, and everyone found a friend. And she said by the end of the night, the best comment she heard was from parents saying, "I think we've made a couple of friends this evening." So it was just a good evening. And thank you for the administration, for so many, again, with your busy schedules, finding time to attend. Also, to the teachers for getting through MCAS two-point-oh in a very busy season and a very busy month, and for the tech department and for the work that Greg did, working so closely with our tech folks to make sure that it was as seamless an experience and as enjoyable as state testing can be for our students when it's, the weather's getting nicer. All indications are, was, it was a successful endeavor, and that is really due to a lot of people working very hard to make it a good experience for kids.
Great. Wow, lots of sharing tonight. Excellent.
It's May.
It's, it's good. We have, did I miss anybody? All right. Thank you, everyone, for sharing. We will move on to personal items. Personal items, there is a report in the docket. My note, Jen Callahan is going nowhere, except staying in administration, but she has officially resigned from her position as teacher, so much enjoying the administration and all that it brings. So thank you for being part of the administrative team and staying with it.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity.
Make a great, make a great difference. It's a difference so far in the lives of the kids, as you always have as a teacher. We have communications, distribution of school newsletters, April district doings. We move to future agenda items. On the docket already, we're going to start with the election of officers. We expect the presentation by Melikan Middle School PTO, and we have a Melikan Middle School Improvement Plan. Do members have anything else to?
Yeah.
That new policies will be distributed?
Yes.
With the edits. All right, so we have left our approval of bills and payrolls, and I will entertain a motion for us to enter into executive session with no intent to.
And that we enter into executive session with no intent to return to open meeting.
I think.
To discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to.
Thank you. And a second. Seconded by Joan. And this is a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. It's an open session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.